Okay, welcome to the October 5th Act and Planning Board Meeting. We'll call it to order and let's name the political leaders.
Political Agents who apply of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're shy a member or two today, so Andrew will designate you as a member tonight.
Okay.
And then we have two sets of minutes to approve, but we don't have a quorum to get them approved, so we'll table those as well.
If Adam needs to be designated.
Just designated.
Adam, Adam and Andrew.
Oh, Adam does too, yeah. Adam, we designate you as well. We need you. First up, old business is John O'Keefe, 193 Fox Ridge Road, map 248 lot 009. Site plan review.
Hello again.
Hello.
My name is Michael Menery with Civil Works New England.
Joe Griffin with Civil Works New England.
Want to just give a quick overview? We did the site walk today.
Yep, so yep, we gave the site walk today. Yeah, we walked, we walked the sites, saw the proposed buildings and the edge of pavements, the corners of the soil filters, the center line of the entrance. So, we went over the waivers that we're proposing for the tree buffer.
The project is proposing three storage buildings at 193 Fox's Ridge Road and the associated drive aisles and drainage improvements to support that development.
It was very well marked. We appreciate that.
Thank you. So, something new from previous meetings. You now see we have that gate there in the front. As well as the DOT permit was accepted with some stipulations. We're currently discussing some things over with them right now. They, so we proposed the 30-foot wide drive aisle. So, in the main DOT regs, it's based off of how many trips per day the site will have. So, we're under the 50 trips per day threshold, so they're proposing to have a 22-foot drive aisle. So, we're currently discussing that with them to have a 30-foot because we believe the box trucks, you know, two box trucks come, we're gonna need that space. So, we're currently talking that over with DOT right now.
Do you have any indication when you'll get resolution to that question?
Not at this time, no. He was gonna bring it up to his superiors and have those conversations with them to see if this warranted the wider entrance due to the nature of the use of the site.
And you mentioned that they didn't require, DOT didn't require a culvert? Or you guys didn't want to use one? How was that?
So, the DOT permit indicates that there'll be a cross culvert there. The issue with the cross culvert is that it wouldn't drain anywhere to ensure that you've got cover over the culvert. You've got two feet of cover over your pipe. Your pipe is a 12 to 15-inch pipe. It wouldn't drain anywhere, so we're having a conversation with DOT regarding utilizing, coming off from Fox's Ridge Road at the current slope of, I believe the cross slope on that road is about 3.5 percent. We'll maintain that 5 to 10 feet off from edge of pavement, and that would create a low point that would allow the water to, if it rose up on the north side, it would allow it to continue to drain over the driveway.
I think their terminology is a gutter.
So, that's part of the current discussion with them as well?
Correct.
Have you thought about landscaping the parking area at all? Is there any ability to do that around the edges?
We could potentially provide some landscaping, however, we are asking for that waiver request for the west side, which is along Fox's Ridge Road, and the south side, which is between the existing two-story house and the development.
Are you planning to use electronic surveillance?
I believe that they were intending to use a camera system. Yes.
Can we talk a little bit about, you're asking for a reduction in the vegetation, in the vegetative barrier?
Yes.
What are you thinking?
So, what the hope is, is that the site would be able to be seen by passerby's during off-hours in the event that something didn't look right. Passerby's have typically called police or services to prevent issues. I know in the town that I live, Lebanon, there have been several instances where it was a passerby who saw something at a business late at night that didn't look right, who made the calls and prevented break-ins of those businesses. So, we're sort of envisioning that same additional protection here for this property.
So, if we followed the ordinance that's asking for a vegetative buffer and you're asking for a reduction...
They're asking for a waiver.
But it says reduction in, and I was wondering what kind of plantings they were proposing. So, reduction doesn't mean... A waiver? A waiver, so no landscaping, no buffer?
We feel...
You have the vegetative pond there, and we talked, I mean, the retention pond, and we talked about that on the...
Yeah.
So, I'm just wondering, is there room to put some kind of screening for the neighbors? If you have electronic surveillance?
I guess if we were looking at possibly providing additional plantings north of that proposed soil filter, that pond, and sort of tying that into the existing tree line that's there, that would help buffer the abutters that were to the northwest of the site. Directly across the road is the old herd lumberyard. And that's the portion that we were envisioning. We wouldn't have that screening, and it would open that up for security purposes. But we could potentially look at installing vegetation to the north of the proposed soil filter.
I think one of the intents of the comprehensive plan is to maintain the rural character of the town, and I think that that's what, you know, the intention of the ordinance is. I can understand what you're talking about with people being able to see, but also there's a benefit to other people in the town to have some kind of screening, some kind of, you know, maintaining that vegetative buffer.
Yeah, we understand. Part of our thinking was that the area in question currently doesn't have that vegetative buffer. You look at the old herd mill across the street. You look at other properties in the area, that we would sort of be maintaining that level of screening that's currently there.
It could be an improvement. It's certainly gonna change the landscape when you put three buildings in there.
Yeah.
It's not gonna look the same at all. That's just my two cents.
Is it a showstopper? Excuse me, I'm sorry. Is it a showstopper to have vegetation for the project in accordance with the ordinance?
So, what we wouldn't want to do is, we wouldn't want to put rooted material up on the berm for that proposed soil filter.
Okay, so there's like a, there's like a physical limitation to the building with respect to the...
There's a physical limitation to the vegetation that we could use on top of that. We wouldn't want to plant trees on top of it. The root balls will get into the underdrain system, the treatment aspect, the treatment layer of the proposed soil filter as well.
Okay.
So, there are some limitations.
That's more of a concrete limitation versus just wanting passerby's in terms of, like, the happenstance of security, you know?
Yes.
So, that's more of a, I think that's more of a substantive reason for your waiver request, you know?
Okay.
Do you have anything, like, written in terms of, like, a survey that you've done that would kind of outline that limitation for, that you could add to the waiver?
We could provide that.
You know what I mean? Like, something that kind of gives, like, we want this waiver not just because of, you know, to give people a chance to see if there's some wrongdoers out there, but, you know, because there's a limitation in, you know, our planned building project.
Yep.
So, I think that would be probably helpful.
Yeah, and potentially do do something to the northwest, like you were talking about.
Okay.
I think that would be helpful.
Yeah.
Yep.
Well, the lighting, on the lighting plan, will the lights at the end of the building, facing the road, they won't be kicked on by traffic on the road. It's too far back, right?
Correct. And then I believe the lighting plan shows the luminaire.
Yeah, it does.
As well.
And somewhere in here, you talk about the snow, what you're doing with the snow, right?
Yep. I believe that's on the site plan.
So, proposed snow storage up in that far top left-hand corner, isn't that gonna creep into the parking area?
There would...
And the turnaround there?
Yeah, there would be minimal storage sort of along that corner. The intent would be that it's pushed down into the sediment for bay. Sediment for bay will capture the sands and salts. The water will go into the proposed soil filter, be treated in accordance with main DEP requirements, and then sediment would be removed from the for bay every spring. So, the intent would be that the majority of the snow will be stored in that sediment for bay soil filter area. But there would be somewhat that's winged as you're trying to push it down along the edges.
Because on that backside, isn't that gonna be an embankment there?
It is, yes. Yeah.
This is a page that shows the actual plan for that filtration system, right?
Yep, there's a detail on there. Sheet 12?
Sheet 12.
So, that's the erosion control materials. Yes, that's the...
No water, right, the site?
Correct. No water, no sewer.
Are you guys still working on getting a draft lease together?
Uh, yes, yeah. And we can submit that as part of conditional approval.
Now, we were gonna address the big trucks and the no hazardous.
Yes, yeah. Small engines being drained of oil, gasoline, things like that.
So, the soil filter is draining, it's gonna go under the driveway and ditch off into that low spot? Is the intention of that too?
Yes.
And there'll be no dumpster that carry out their trash?
Correct.
Gonna go have a public hearing, right?
Yeah. Yeah, the next thing we have to do is schedule a public hearing.
Okay.
You know, we still need to hear from the state, and we can conditionally, put those conditions in on your lease agreement, but we do have to schedule the public hearing.
Yeah.
Two weeks? How much time?
Two weeks or a month? Do you want to have everything before the public hearing, or do you want... Because I've got some pretty heavy agendas coming up.
Sir?
I have a question. My name is Bill Martin. Actually, I own the property. I always have the impression that this was the public meeting. So, how, how many more times are we gonna have to call back the engineers in your eyes? Like, how many more times do you think they become, I mean, it's about $4,000 every time they show up, and I just, I'm already into this project pretty deep, and you're here and they're answering the same questions as they did last week, or last time they were here.
One of the, well, we have to do a public hearing. This is not the public hearing. That has to be announced. The abutters have to be told and given the opportunity to attend, to ask questions.
Right.
What Jason was just asking me is if we want to have those documents we talked about that we don't have right now prior to scheduling that. And if we did that, it's probably one more meeting.
Okay.
We'd have the public meeting, and if everything was good to go, it's probably one more meeting.
Okay.
Can't guarantee it, but that would be the...
I'm trying to, I don't have the buckets here, so I'm trying to cut across as much as possible.
I think in the best interest of you guys, it'd probably be best to push it out till the first week in October. That way, you have all your documents when you come in.
November.
Uh, November, excuse me, I'm sorry. We're in the first week of October. So, just so that we can, we don't say, "Well, we'd really like to see that" prior to you guys coming in, prior to approval. So, if we push it out, you guys can just kind of pester, whatever you want with the DOT and get some answers. Then we'll hold the public hearing, and everything's been presented very well. We've just got certain steps that we have to meet.
Yeah. So, from the DOT's permit standpoint, we do have an approved permit.
Right.
We will build it to that permit if necessary. The two things that could possibly change is we would have 22-foot wide drive entrance as opposed to the 30 that we proposed, and we would put a culvert in that drains to nowhere. So, I mean, it's, it is an approved permit. We can, we do have mains DOT access to the site, so I don't feel as though that's holding us back.
Okay.
We can present that permit to you.
You'd have to change the drawings, though, then, to reflect that.
Correct.
So, either way, have it resolved by the ninth. Either the drawings are revised, or you've convinced the state that what you've got is sufficient.
Yep, absolutely.
So, yeah, and then maybe with the vegetation, just extend it down to the road and come back with it. When you do come back, make sure that you have at least one, two plans that have a signature block on it.
Okay.
In the case, the best-case scenario, that they can approve it that evening.
Okay.
And I think we heard tonight that if you could do something to the northwest...
Yeah, what we'll do is, we'll look at vegetation.
Yes.
Continuing that vegetation for a year.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
Not the ninth?
The first, second.
Oh, the first. All right, do we need a motion to do that?
Because it's a public hearing.
Okay.
It's not public comment tonight. If you have public comment, you have to come on the second.
We thought this was the public meeting.
No, it was a site, we did, this was...
Site plan?
Site plan, a site walk.
Well, I have a question about the site plan. Can I ask it?
On the second? Sorry.
Great. Well, work with the DOT. We'll get that addressed. We'll work on the lease contract, add the vegetation as discussed. We'll update that waiver request, and we'll get that submitted before the second.
We need a motion for the public hearing, October 2nd.
At 6:00.
November.
November 2nd at 6:00.
Make a motion that we hold a public hearing with regard to this project, the herd, thank you, the John O'Keefe 93, 193 Fox's Ridge Road, map 248 lot 009, for holding the meeting on the first Thursday in November, the second at 6:00.
I'll second that.
Those in favor?
Opposed.
Thank you very much.
All right, next up, new business. Leo Dion, 4010th Street, map 147 lot 034, application for greatest practical extension.
Afternoon, good evening. Some of the folks that may or may not know me, I'll do a quick little intro. Leo Dion. Wife and I have been active residents and homeowners here since 1987, I guess it was. Been active members of the community, served on the school board for, I think, 10, 10 and 11 years or so. Been a great, been a great place to spend our life and raise our kids here, so. The scope of the project you're looking at here is a, it's a family, you know, family home, been in the family for 50, 60 years or so. What we're looking to do is basically upgrade the house, replace the existing structure, reuse the existing foundation to minimize any earthwork in the area. Foundation is still in pretty good shape, so we'd like to basically reuse it, probably want to add two, you see how the house sits on the ground there in the back? There's some rot back there. We would like to put two layers of blocks on top of the existing foundation to raise the home a little bit, get it off the ground. And the, the second story you can see is, consumes about maybe half of the footprint of the entire foundation. So, the intent would be to try to go ahead and take advantage of that 30% expansion and, and expand the second story to the north side of the house there, as you can see, the far back. So, expand the second story to that back wall. And the side of the house towards the driveway, the thought is, we'd like to put a, actually the other side, Jason, but we want to put a farmer's porch the length of the house. You see the existing porch there. We'd like to basically put a partially enclosed farmer's porch there to give us a little space for mudroom, entryway, et cetera. I think, I don't know if there's a better view of the house, Jason, from the other side. I thought there was from the driveway. I guess not. Oh yeah, right there. So the farmer's porch would be on the left side of the house there, where there's already a partial porch in the back and we kind of extend that out. Basically consuming driveway, not changing any green coverage or any of that, but just consuming up some driveway space. Right now is, if you see the plans, the overall structure would look very similar to what you see today, um, some updated windows, obviously, um, but, uh, you know, the front, the front porch area there would, would stay very similar, the back section, you know, the second story would, would increase in size a bit. It's a 26 by 30 house as it stands today.
Septic's at the top of the hill.
Yeah, the, the septic, so it's a pumping station, uh, down by the house, a pumping station pumps up to the top of the hill, uh, basically in front of the garage up underneath the driveway. So that would not be impacted, um, still a very good functioning system, uh, would not be impacted, it's, it's pumping up, as you can see, it's, it's pretty steep banking back there, um, the septic goes right up to the top of the driveway in front of the garage. And the wells on the other side of the house, basically in front of the house, so you've got septic on one side and well kind of like on the other side. Not really looking to add any bedrooms or anything like that, so.
There's no date on this, um, replacement system variance request, is that part of the original design or is that something that's acting?
I believe there's a 1988 date on it that I saw.
Not on this page for the replacement system request.
Okay.
Signature at the bottom, but there isn't a date, I just asked.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know.
Same as the person who applied for it, so I would say so. On the second page, the evaluator, John Large, dated it. He just, the owner just didn't date it.
Yeah, I just didn't see, I didn't know if this was something else.
Yeah, I see what you're saying.
Since 1988, that's all.
Shoreline, right?
Yeah.
Shoreline? What's your lot coverage right now? I guess I didn't see that.
He didn't deal one because it wasn't changing anything in the, I think he did something here though.
Yeah.
Just on the actual application itself.
Nothing was changing, you know, the only coverage that's changing is actually is gonna be a little bit less hot top.
So, non-vegetated is 21, 29 out of 13, 14.
How much blacktop you've taken up, do you know?
Uh, it's gonna be 30 by 8, 8 feet by 30 feet.
Anything else on that?
Yep.
Adam? Site walk on this? We're gonna do a site walk on this?
Your call if you want to ask.
No, I'm just, I'm just asking if that's, um...
We don't do them every time.
Okay.
If there's really no, if there's a possibility that they can move backwards, then yes, but in some situations.
Where he's not moving.
Yeah, and they, and even if he was, there's really no ways to put the house backwards, other than, you know, you take, take the foundation and say, yeah, move your house back two feet, it just doesn't, isn't...
Andrew?
Nothing.
Somebody wanna make a motion?
Motion approved? What are we doing? What's the motion for God, Pat?
Um, I make a motion, we accept the application for greatest practical extent for Leo, um, and Rosemary Dionne, 3610th Street, um, oh, actually it's 4010th, 4010th Street, um, for replacing the, the existing house structure, uh, with a new structure and expanding the house 30%. Repurpose these existing foundation and adding six, 16 inches of blocks to existing foundation, uh, or porch, full porch? I can't read that.
Yeah, that's adding the farmer's porch.
Farmer's porch, okay.
And recovering, do you have any 40 square feet of?
Of pavement.
Pavement.
Thanks.
I'll second that.
All those in favor? All those opposed? What was zero?
Cool, that's A. Yeah.
I was looking for a way.
I got the next one.
If I, if I could, first of all, thank you very much, if I could just share, uh, an experience. I went through this process a long time ago and, um, I have to say that the experience I had at this time, working with the existing office and the court enforcement and David, uh, was, was a very pleasurable experience compared to some of the historical experiences I've had. They, they enforce what they need to enforce, they're doing what they do, but they're also gonna help people, so who else are these guys? Thank you for your time.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
For saying that, thank you.
Have a good one. Hear that Tyler?
Yeah, I won't be.
Forget it.
Alright then.
You're gonna start paying for your copies now.
Lucinda, the next is Lucinda Jefferson, 1280 West Shore Drive, map 121, lot 27, application for greatest practical extent. Tyler's been designated speaker.
Yeah, so basically looking to tear down, rebuild, um, you can see the existing plan shows the patio at 54 feet, house at 66 feet, um, we have power lines 20 feet behind the house, um, you can see on the survey, um, and I'm proposing to come back 10 feet to the power lines and calling my distance from the high water 64 feet instead of 54 feet, so moving back 10 feet, um, and a little closer to the power lines.
How far from the power lines?
I'm 20 now, looking to go 10.
So I would think there would be a setback for that one, Chris?
Yes, the CMP has an easement. I think it's 15, but I've heard every, I've heard 13 different ways from every CMP person. I've heard 15 feet from the line, I've heard 15 feet total, I've heard 15 feet, whoa, in like, you know, from the power line itself in a circumference, um...
I understand those things are giving off a lot of energy.
I think it's 15 feet Tyler, but I'm 100% positive, I'm actually trying to...
Well, if it's 15, then move back five, I, I thought it was 15 too, but...
Might be something you want to find out? Or I can find out?
Or, yeah, like I said, I've tried and I get different answers every time, but...
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess we'll have an exact answer.
Tomorrow to...
For next meeting, have an answer.
Yeah, because I mean, if it's gonna, if it's gonna affect how, where you can put it, I, you know, I don't want you coming and saying, well, I can't put it, or I don't want them saying, he can't, the CMP saying, um, he's violating our easement.
Correct, no, that makes sense.
So you're gonna have a new foundation?
Yeah.
It does go down. Need some new shocks. I wasn't gonna say it.
And we can't get any lot coverage? Goodness?
There's one in there, Joe, Joe.
Yeah, we're well under 20, we're gonna stay under 20, so. We're at 11.8 right now.
Okay.
All goodness.
Can you go through the pictures again?
Yeah, sure.
You don't have to do anything with that tree behind the house.
No, the goal is to not take any trees down, I don't think we have to.
We're coming 10 feet this way?
Yep, the power lines are right out of sight, right there to the kind of right.
I don't know if it's 10 or 15, huh?
Yeah.
Yeah, is, redoing the whole thing.
So it's already a walkout basement downstairs? It's already an eight foot? You're not gonna use any of that foundation, you're just...
No. It's block, it sits a little too low, it's got moisture problems, it's nasty. Looks real good from the outside, but inside's not great.
So if it's 15, you can only expand five feet?
If it's 15, I can move back five, correct. But I'm also calling, I'm also technically 54, oh yeah, so keeping the 50, so yeah, I'd be back to 59 instead of the 64. I can at least go back five, maybe 10, but I do think it is 15 feet now that you say that. Who would you even call for that?
I just texted Nate.
Nate? Oh, you think he'd know that? Me?
He's a master electrician.
Yeah.
I don't know when he'll get back to me though, but I'm hoping he had his phone in his hand.
He's gonna know that, don't he?
I'll tell you in a second.
He's writing a story.
Huh?
He's writing a story.
Oh, you see the dot, dot, dot? That makes sense with him.
When I see you in your mouth, hey, stop talking to me. I'm just kidding.
What's, where's the, let me see the, are you, in, you've taken some of your 30%?
Um...
The existing square footage?
All my 30% is, is used right there, so I can't expand.
So the house is staying exactly the same?
Everything, everything inside of 100 has to stay the same.
They're not expanding the square footage or the volume?
Inside of 100, correct.
Inside of 100?
Right.
Making it a little bit bigger past the 100, right there.
If I'm past the 100.
Yeah, I didn't see that either, I finally figured out what the red is.
Yes.
We should still have a sheet on that, right? We should have something that... We should have something that's the unit.
Uh, it would go with, I guess, lock coverage, because the structure does it behind the 100 doesn't pertain to.
Right, that'd be on my building permit and proposed lock coverage.
Doesn't pertain to the practical extent, I guess.
We got nothing in the unit to build, that's it, right?
No, I tried, I've just been, I've been, I've asked the question before, and what I think I remember is 15, but I don't remember where I got the information from, so I don't know.
Matt Page just said 10 or 15, he actually doesn't know for sure.
That's probably why I'm not getting a response back either.
I swear, every, when I ask, it's different, it's.
I've done it before and they, it just throws you all over the place, because I had this conversation with Tyler in the office.
Oh, you, you, yeah, you couldn't call him, you had to get some kinda higher up guy.
Well, we can do a sidewalk and just, but we can hopefully have an answer by that time, and I don't know.
If they wanna do a sidewalk, or just say, if it's good enough, whatever CMP setback is, that's what I go to, but up to them.
It's up to the board.
I don't know if this contains, but I just Googled something, it says, "In accordance with main law, Title 35A, MRSI Chapter 7A, a person may not erect, construct, operate, maintain, transport, or store any equipment or item within 10 feet of an overhead high voltage line, except as allowed for in the law."
For what?
Except as allowed for in the law, June 30th, 22, 2022.
Read what you can do within 10 feet again.
A person may not, this is how it's written, erect, construct, operate, maintain, transport, or store any equipment or item within 10 feet of an overhead high voltage line. And then in parentheses, it says, "Except as allowed for in the law."
It doesn't really say build, like, it says erect, but then it goes on to equipment.
Construct, it says construct.
Erect and construct, yeah.
It, it's 10 or 15, I just don't know which one it is.
I think it's 10, I'm just looking at that.
Where's that from?
It's 10. That is from.
Google.
It's Google, but it's CMP site, uh, CMP.
WebMD.
I can't read, these lights, like, my eyes are going nuts. What does it say right there? Ah, on the bottom, where it's from, right there, CMP.
Yeah, it's from, it's right from CMP's website.
Okay, yeah, it's in black and white and it says up to 10 feet.
Yeah.
10 feet, then.
And just use that as your, like, if that's the source and it cites the actual statute and everything, then there it is.
All right.
That was worth it.
I just read 15 feet on all the ones, but not CMP's.
High voltage power lines, probably different.
I wonder if it's different per, like, size of wire, like, three phase, four phase, Says 10, I'm good with it.
If it's 10, that means you're going back 10 feet.
Correct, yep, 54 to 64.
Do you wanna make a motion?
I make a motion, we accept the application for, uh, hold on, get it right, Lucinda Jefferson? Oh, here we go, 1280 West Shore Drive, MAP 121, Lot 027, the application for greatest practical extent.
No closer than.
No closer than 59 feet from the water line?
10 is 64.
64 is what I propose, 64, yep.
64, um, and you're, and you're extending 10 feet, just to be clear.
Pushing, yeah, it's going back 10 feet, correct.
Towards the, the power line.
Second.
All in favor? All right. Next item, new business.
What's?
Peppin Cottages, Denise Peppin, 101 Thrush Road, MAP 127, Lot 002, application for greatest practical extent. I was designated again.
Similar thing, we're looking to tear down, rebuild, uh, new foundation, everything. My existing right now is 44 and a half to the high water. Even though I don't think we can go back, I'm 20 feet from the septic, that's my setback, I think I can square it off a little to be a little further back, and I'm proposing 46 feet, um, just to move it back a smidge.
Is this already cottages, several units in one building? Is that what this is?
We get them wrong.
Proposed, pardon?
This is one building on one lot.
What's A, B, C, D, E?
Um, because, so this one, so this house here and here, this used to be one lot, I guess, back in the day, the owners, they separated it.
That's weird. I just cut it into two different ones, but in the same lot.
But these people own in different names, so that's why it might say, unless this is partially AMD.
Well, it says in the, in the.
Oh, what are you saying, this? Oh, no, I just make it easy, so when I, I try and make it, so when I break down, because it's confusing.
It says cottages, and I just thought there were several units within one building.
No, I was just trying to, as I did volume and square footage, I broke it into sections, because it's all chopped up. It helps Jay follow, yeah.
That is, I need it broken down as best as possible. You'd be surprised what I get on front of my, in front of my desk.
Just the only photo?
No, 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 I just. That's the roadside, that's the lakeside, so pretty much I only have two photos on this one right now. Uh, it is a new foundation.
Tear down, they're looking to take the whole thing down, there's, I don't think it's a full foundation, it's only under.
Yeah, it's not.
Main camp, rest of it's under, it's cinder block.
And you said you're moving it back?
I, just trying to square it off to get some little distance from the water, even though I can't really go back any further, but it'll be further from the water, I, foot and a half.
There's an existing septic system behind the camp, um, there is another plant, I think there was a design for another system, pretty much to go back in the same spot.
Yeah, can't really go anywhere where the.
We're kinda married to the setback on this one. Uh, because state, 20 feet from your septic field has, you have to maintain, um, 15 feet, excuse me, or 20, what is it?
20 with a full foundation.
Yeah, 15 for a slab, and then eight feet for your tanks, your septic tank.
So is this a replacement system that's going in?
So the only thing we had on file was this older one, and we, we thought that there might have been another system installed, but we don't have anything, any knowledge on that right now. So all we can go with is what we have in front of us right now.
I'd like to see, when these houses get updated, I'd like to see the systems getting updated as well.
Tyler, he does have, he did have a design for one, didn't he?
Variance paper says 86. Excuse me.
That makes sense why that wasn't put in. Because this one is the white camp, which is here, and it's 2020, so maybe this one went in.
And he just never, this is 17.
Yeah, that's why we couldn't find any record of it or this one.
So the white camp and the blue camp are on two separate lots?
Yep.
But the septic says, or the leach field for the white camp is partially on the blue camp property?
Do you think they'd be opposed to updating things?
If.
The, this new design.
If we were to agree to this, you know, keeping it where it is or that foot and a half, and the contingency was putting a new septic, no problem at all.
I can make him do that.
I mean, my goal at the end of the day too is to try and get him to do a new septic anyway, you know what I mean? Because I swim, I swim in that lake, so.
Yeah, well, anybody that comes through, I think that's how we can start cleaning things up, because all these things are getting expanded and, you know, they're becoming full-time residences, and I think that that should be a condition. I think it would help improve things greatly. There's still some, believe it or not, there's still some metal drums out there.
I just did one mouse them last year, it was a hood of a car. 12 feet from the water. I was like, and they went through planning board and didn't even need to put in a new septic, because it was a little old lady that did it, and they're just like, oh yeah, no worries. I'm like, what?
I just don't hide them.
How do we get that?
Oh, I said, I told her I'd go. If I went through there, there's no way they would let that go. But because it was you, they didn't even question it.
I just don't know how much. Because that system's designed, swapped, this one, these two systems. But I can't, you can only, I just don't, because the system's not there, I don't know how close it would be, I can't just say, um.
I don't know, this, to me, the septic system is the most important thing. And, and I would be, if you think it could go back a little bit more, maybe just a little bit more?
Did you show Tyler that?
Yeah, oh no, I didn't show, we were just looking at it, but it, I mean, I, I agree with, with, with Pat, the septic is really the most important thing, and what, you're gonna get a couple feet out of it?
Yeah.
I don't know.
Yeah, I mean.
I was just showing, this, this goes from this way to this way.
Yeah, I mean, I'm willing to give up a couple feet and say new septic if, if that kept everyone happy, yeah.
Excuse me.
I agree.
Yeah, makes sense to me. I mean, I'd be willing to call it four feet instead of a foot and a half, and, I mean, it can't go, it's, it's tight in there to start fitting the septic in after the fact anyway, but, um, I'd be willing to do that.
So how far would that be from the water?
48 and a half feet, huh?
Yes, correct.
And a new septic.
48 and a half, you said?
48 and a half feet with a new septic.
And you'll pin the foundation?
Certified plot plan for you, yep.
Thank you.
I make a motion that we accept the application for Denise Peppin, 101 Thrush Road, MAP 127, Lot 002, application for greatest practical extent, um, with the condition that the septic be replaced, updated, and the building be no closer than 48 and a half feet from the high water mark.
I'll second that.
All those in favor? Opposed?
Two trees.
For zip.
I'm gonna have the surveyor give you a 100-foot line on that.
Yeah.
I think most of them are behind the 100.
Yeah.
There's one dead one right next to this tree in the front that's dead as a doornail, I showed, I sent a picture to you, but I'll show you again.
Yeah, I just.
But I have the whole, I have a point system there, and then there's one, the rest are not cutting to cut, they're cutting because they have to come down to do the house, they're just, three of them right next to the foundation. Thank you.
Good luck. Who wants those back?
All the pending projects?
Um, no, um, we have, um, a applicant for ground mounted solar, um, personal use, next, next meeting, um, no sidewalks, I thought we were, so, um, I pushed that other one out because I thought we were gonna be more busy next week, that's why, that's why I was pushing out the, um, the public hearing, but that gives me time to get it out there anyway.
I think that's a good idea.
Give them time to get the application.
Sounds a good idea.
No, that was, I, he, he had just not, he didn't sign something last time, that's not right. But, and then first week, we have, potentially, that we, I've been in connection, next week, next meeting, I'll have documents for the solar array on Kelly Orchards, and I requested, uh, new and old, the old approved ones and the new ones that they're proposing, so that, and I want them before next week, next meeting, so that you guys can take them home with you. Uh, I just, the problem with this one is, um, the condition, the, the site plan that was approved was never signed, they never brought it back in by the board to get it signed, and it got never registered. With that being said, anyway, the two-year mark already lapsed, so the whole thing, it's a new application, but the board had already approved the larger solar field, and now they're coming back in for a smaller field. But, I'll give you guys all that documentation, um, next planning board meeting. So yeah, right now, it's just, um, is it just the, the solar thing for next week, for next meeting?
Actually, we had the paperwork that came in the mail, they actually are thinking around the second. So I can call them and push them to the next meeting as a good as a gap.
I'll let you guys, I'll be in touch then, I guess, if, um, because if they need to be on the second, if there's a reason why they have to be on the second.
No, they said that they're willing to come forward, they're just, they're assuming that they're making the first one in November.
Because I'd rather... Well, first week in, our first one in November's gonna be...
Right.
Yeah, bring it forward. And if we have time, if, you know, if there are changes for the ordinance that people want to talk about.
Next meeting, we have heard, there's actually stuff.
We don't have heard.
Oh, come on.
Just a greatest practical... Oh, we do have a greatest practical extent for the next one. Okay, so yeah, right now we have two things on the agenda, if we can get them to move the, um, the personal solar, the ground mounted solar, to the next meeting.
Okay.
So, yeah.
This is my favorite time of the night.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Yay, I second.
All those in favor? Opposed? So be it.